All right, welcome everyone. We are called to order at 9:00 AM, right on the dot. We're going to start out with a moment of silence, item B. Commissioner Tabai?
Please stand and join me in the flag. By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, sir. We don't have any minutes to approve under item D's and deltas. We'll move on to E's and echo resolutions. We've got two of them. I've got the first, E1. Do we have anyone here from the EDC for E1? You want to come up to the front row or up to the dais for now? And I'm happy to read through the whole thing, but if you'd like, I can kind of abbreviate it a little bit and then give you some more time to speak on it. Would that work for you, sir?
Sure.
All right. So basically, this is a resolution addressing Maiden Brevard, which is a joint program of the EDC, the Cocoa Beach Regional Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Melbourne Regional Chamber, the Greater Palm Bay Chamber, and the Titusville Area Chamber. It addresses EDC's talent asset pipeline, deals with raising awareness about manufacturing careers, enhancing manufacturing job placement. It also mentions that the state of Florida recognizes this month, the month of October, as Manufacturing Month. It also addresses the fact that during this month, a number of manufacturers open their doors to showcase modern manufacturing and inspire some interest in the field. And it goes on and has some other pleasantries. And I would ask for a motion to adopt this, if I may. All right, I'll go ahead and second Commissioner Pritchett's motion to adopt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. You've got the floor, sir.
I'd like to thank you all on behalf of the EDC Manufacturers Association of the Space Coast and over 500 manufacturers within Brevard County. Thank you for your support.
Right, thanks. And if you'd be so kind as to give the clerks your info so they can include it with the minutes?
Perfect.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Pritchett, you're up next for E2.
Thank you, sir. Beth with the... Come on for it, ma'am. I'm going to read this resolution and then Commissioner Lowborough will open up the floor for you to say a few things.
And Commissioner Pritchett, I'm sorry to interject for a sec, but I almost forgot. We do have a couple of plaques, both for this and the prior ones, so maybe after you're done with this, we'll just kind of knock both of them out at the same time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Whereas the nation's 120,000 nonprofit organizations and National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for Humanities, Brevard Culture Alliance, and the nation's 4,500 local arts agencies designate October as National Arts and Humanities Month. The arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of mankind and enhance and enrich the lives of every American, play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country. Whereas the arts and culture industry also strengthens our economy by generating $166.3 billion in total economic activity annually. This creative economy drives tourism, commerce, supports American workers, makes up 4.5% of the annual gross domestic product. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County does proclaim this month, October 2020, as National Arts and Humanities Month. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll go ahead and second that. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Augeran, interim director of Brevard Cultural Alliance, and we thank you for recognizing Arts and Humanities Month this morning. Brevard Cultural Alliance is your designated local arts agency. We serve cultural organizations, individual artists, and students in Brevard Public Schools, and we are honored to serve in that capacity, and we thank you very much. We've been celebrating Arts and Humanities Month all month long.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You want to go ahead and do the photos, Commissioner? Up to y'all, however you want to do it. We can just kind of hand them out, or we can do something a little more formal and have a couple photos, whatever you all would prefer.
I know.
We're all incognito. So whenever you see the pictures, certainly will be dated.
Yeah, we hope.
Were you smiling? All right, that's it as far as item E. So we have the consent agenda. I know F9 was deleted. That was the EDC item. So with respect to the remaining items, would anyone like something pulled? All right, I'll go ahead and second your motion to approve all of consent, noting that F9 was deleted. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, consent passes unanimously. So we'll move on to public comments. Amazingly, we only have one card today. We have Ms. Ryder Hicks from West Melbourne. Welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and distinguished members of the commission. I'm Dina Ryder Hicks, Public Affairs Manager with Waste Management. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak with you here this morning. Just a brief service reminder for our residents this morning. That is a reminder of the requirement for residents to please contact us for service for large loose yard waste piles, also known within the industry as clam yard waste piles, and for bulky waste, which is anything that is too large to fit in the carts, such as furniture. A yard waste pile requires a clam truck if it is over three cubic yards, which is about the size of a bed of a full-size pickup truck. And since not everyone places a yard, a large yard waste pile out for service every week, clam piles are actually scheduled and routed for service within three business days of the residents' regular containerized yard waste day. So scheduling for clam yard waste or bulky waste is not a new requirement. This has been in place for at least the past seven years. And residents have several options to get in contact with us to schedule service. Residents can email us at centralfloridasservice@wm.com or live chat at wm.com. Or if you live in the North County, you can call us at 321-636-6894. Or if you live in the Central or South County, you can call us at 321-723-4455. Again, just simply a reminder for residents to please contact us for these services. It helps us be able to serve you better. And thank you all once again. Thank you for the trust and confidence you place in Waste Management. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I just want to also express my gratitude for things having improved substantially over the past few weeks. I know that that's certainly to your liking as well, but I just wanted to make sure that we made note of that as well.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, that's it amazingly for public comment. Public hearings, we have H1. This is essentially a revisit. I think we've already addressed this, but it had to come back. Is that right, Mr. Bate?
That is right, Commissioner.
Okay, Ms. Bentley, what's the minimum that we have to read into the record in order to proceed to a vote on this?
If you read the title on the agenda, that should do it.
Addition of section 122-29, Use of Vessels on the St. John's River to Chapter 122, Waterways of the Code of Ordinances of Brevard County to Allow for the Implementation of New Slow Speed and Idle Speed Zones. May I have a motion?
Some of.
All right, a motion from Commissioner Smith. I'll go ahead and second the motion to approve. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on to H2. This is a petition to vacate. Public utility easement, 826 South Cameron Circle, Barefoot Bay Mobile Home Subdivision, Unit 1, plat book 22, page 100, Barefoot Bay, Brady G. and Tamara L. Mitchell, D3. Commissioner Tabai, what's your pleasure, sir?
Approve it.
All right, I'll take your motion to approve and second it. All in favor of approval of item H's and hotel 2, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we're through H. There's no unfinished business under I's in India, J new business, J1, South Beaches, Dune Project Maintenance. We don't have any cards on that. Ms. Bentley, do we need to read anything into the record with respect to this?
I think you've identified the record, the item on the record, so that should be sufficient.
Perfect. Commissioner Tabai, I believe this is entirely in your district, if not substantially in your district. What's your pleasure with this?
Approved.
All right, I'll go ahead and take your motion to approve item J's and Juliet 1. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of approval of J1, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? J1 passes unanimously. Moving right along to J2. This deals with use of space at Merritt Island Service Complex, which is where my office is, for Brevard County Tax Collector's Office, Brevard Family Partnership and BCA, and it needs a supermajority. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Commissioners. As you know, we've briefed most of you regarding the space usage up at Merritt Island. We talked about Brevard Family Partnership and the grant and the use of the space for that. Since we've spoken, the tax collector has come and requested space. So this item addresses both of those items. It also brings back to you some of the responses that you requested regarding tourism and moving them into the space. So it's all addressed in that, and we are available for comments or questions.
All right, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll go ahead and second it. We have comments from Commissioner Tabai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not going to belabor this point because I think the board is not in the same direction that I'm interested in going, but I do want to point out some potential savings before the vote is taken. Yes, there was a change to give some space to the tax collector, which I think is a good move, as the tax collector hands over millions of dollars at the end of every budget cycle. However, back to the tourist development office, the county did a, hired a consultant a while ago, Hanson, Lind, and Meyer Incorporated, to find out square foot needed for types of employees. When you look at the TDO, according to the consultant, they would need between 3,000 and 4,000 feet. Currently, the TDO has more than 6,000 feet, double the estimate of, again, Hanson, Lind, and Meyer, a consultant that we had. There is ample space, about 3,455 right in the middle to go at the top. Now, as Commissioner Pritchett pointed out, there would be a cost associated with ending that lease early, which would be $16,600. That would be on February 1st. Now, the $100,000 a year lease over that period would be a rough savings of $133,000 and change. When you subtract the 16,000 out of that savings, that's a net of about $116,700. The county did an estimate, the moving as well as retrofitting cost for that property would be in the neighborhood of $120,000 to $150,000. It's very important to note, assuming that lease is not continued at the end of July 2022, that that moving and retrofitting cost would have to be incurred at some time. So that being said, there would be a net zero over the July 2022, but after that point, the TDO would realize a savings in the amount of at least $100,000 a year. Now, that does leave some space on the bottom, and I honestly don't care. The BCA, Art in Public Places, I think if we are going to make cuts, I think there is no lower fruit than subsidizing art. I just think that the marketplace determines that. It shouldn't be us determining local art going up in public buildings. You may disagree with that, but I think that's $50,000 that can be better spent anywhere else. And when I say anywhere else, I mean anywhere else. Then we get to Brevard Family Partnership, which sounds like a wonderful organization, and they just received a $2 million grant. That $2 million grant is not contingent on any matching funds from the county. I looked at their federal filings here to see if this was a small or a large organization. The organization noted that if they didn't receive the $40,000, that would be roughly $40,000 of rental space. That would be $40,000 less of services that they would provide to folks in the county. And $40,000 sounds like a lot of money until I looked at their 990. In their 2018 990, this is an organization that had more than $4 million of employee compensation. So in other words, if they were to cut their employee compensation 1%, they can more than make up for that $40,000 loss that they would. Also, driving in to the office here, I drove down US 1, and I noted the numerous commercial buildings that had space available. I want it to be known, obviously, that if we are providing free space, this obviously is hurting the businesses that have commercial space lease available. Again, we are probably bastardizing the market. So for all of those reasons, I can't support any of this other than the tax collector, because I see the TDO can break even and then save $100,000 a year going forward. And again, I don't care whether it's the Brevard Family Partnership that receives the bottom or the BCA, but I think the more nominal leases we provide, especially over these long terms, is not good for the county's bottom dollar and certainly isn't good for private business that has ample amount of commercial space available. So for that reason, I can't vote for this.
Mr. Bate, I don't know if you have anything to add, or perhaps Peter or Ian with respect to other offsets on the financial side of it. Jim? Just want to give you an opportunity if there's anything I'd like to chime in with? Okay, fair enough. All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to...
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would like to hear some discussion because Commissioner Tabai brought up some very interesting points in the interest of saving the county money. I'd like to hear some...
I can throw some claps out there.
Commissioner?
...directly rebutting what he's been telling us.
Mr. Golden?
Commissioner, if I could speak a little bit to the Brevard Family Partnership, and they do have a representative in the audience also who can speak probably better, but I will tell you that Brevard Family Partnership and what they do is, years ago, the state privatized the foster care system. When they did that, Brevard Family Partnership was created as a partnership between three agencies. Each agency put up a $1 million bond to start that agency. That was Deveraux, Children's Home Society, and this board. So there's been a connection between this board and Brevard Family Partnership since their inception. You still have appointments to their advisory board, or I'm sorry, to their board of directors. As for their services, they are, I think primarily, and Jim Carlson can speak to this a little bit more, a employee-driven department because of what they do and the services they provide as the only foster care system in Brevard, as the lead agency for that. So they are employee-heavy. So the bulk of, and a large portion of their funds go to support those employees. It is not a stretch to say that every dollar that they have to take away from staffing and put towards things like rent and other things like that does reduce their ability to staff. They are not an agency, as far as I know, Jim can speak to it a little bit more, that traditionally gets increases from the state, because that's where their funding comes from. They're a state-funded agency primarily. But Jim, I don't know if you want to speak any further to that.
I've got a couple of questions for you as well.
Sure.
Just on a related front at least. So as far as the employee compensation, and if you want to, you know, bounce it to the other Jim back there, you're welcome to do that, Ian, either Jim for that matter. You know, we heard that if they cut their employee compensation by 1%, they would cover this $40,000. What I didn't hear was whether any of them were driving Aston Martins or Maybachs or Rolls Royces. I mean, if they're already underpaid for the industry, you're already underpaid for, you know, by way of average wage, I don't know that it's fair to ask them to start cutting their employees' salary that may already be below the average salary in the area.
And I could not speak to their specific salaries. I will say that the grant that we're looking to support with this space is a new grant. It's not existing activities or things that can be absorbed by the staff that they have now. So these are new employees.
You're confident, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is it a fair statement to say that you're confident that by allowing them to have this nominal lease that there is a high likelihood that there will be a direct benefit to the Brevard constituents, to the taxpayers, and the folks that live here that rely on those services?
Definitely for the children and families that are going to be served underneath the grant.
And then as far as the consultant that Commissioner Tabai referenced, I didn't get whether that was from a week ago, a year ago, 10 years ago, or 50 years ago. Do you know about that?
That I could not. I do know that the same, I believe it's the same document, the master space plan.
Yeah, it would be like, sorry, it would be like the early 90s, late 80s.
Okay, so we're talking potentially decades ago is when the assessment was made. Peter, given that we're talking about something that's a rather old document from a consultant that frankly, I've not had the benefit of seeing, I was going to say up till now, but I still don't have a copy of it, which is, I suppose, okay. Do you believe that if we were to cut your square footage to the degree necessary to fit you in there, again noting that Commissioner Tabai is okay having the tax collector there, which reduces even further the amount of available space, would that impact your operations as far as your department's concerned?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things that it would impact. First of all, we have more people in our department now than back whenever this was, you know, first looked at. Secondly, we have a visitor center, which is not accounted for in that study, and that's something that's sort of dictated by ordinance. So a percentage of the tourist development tax has to go towards visitor information. So that's something that, you know, being in downtown Cocoa affords us to do. Being in Merritt Island probably would not be, you know, nearly as effective.
Let me ask you as well, and I may be wrong on this, I apologize if I am, but Peter, you've been to my office, have you not?
Yes, sir.
That green carpet, that emerald green carpet, it might be as old as I am. I think you've seen it. And I'm not saying that for a commission office, there's anything wrong with having frugal surroundings and essentially a concrete mausoleum to operate in. I have no issue with that. It's free to the taxpayers, and I'm happy to be there. But when it comes to driving tourism to the area, do you think that there could be an impact as a result of having a visitor center in a building that frankly is ugly and ancient that would, without question, require certain build-out costs, at least to the degree that Commissioner Tabai articulated?
Yeah, I mean, I think the build-out costs, you know, sort of offset the value benefit there. And I think there's an opportunity next year as we go into looking at, you know, basically an economic environment that's a little bit down. I think there's going to be a lot of opportunities and better spaces to get a much lower lease amount. So that's something I'd like to have the time to really investigate next year if I could. We certainly could even look at renegotiating our current space, but, you know, do we need 7,000 square feet? We can do that analysis and bring that back to the commission at some point, but I would like the time, you know, next year to really look at that. We, our lease is up in July of '22. We start getting the ability to get out of that lease earlier in July of next year. So I think, you know, mid next year, we'd like to start looking at that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to keep you in D2, so I know either of these options certainly keep you in the district, but, you know, if you end up with more space than you need and it's no more expensive than having the bare minimum, certainly, you know, go with what you'd like with respect to that, whatever you think would positively impact operations or at least limit the downside of it. Jim, let me ask you a question, sir. And I'm sorry to kind of bounce around here. I just, I want to touch on a few things that were mentioned. With respect to BCA, my understanding, and forgive me because I'm going back a little ways here, so if I'm off, please help me out here with this, but we had previously had a contract with them that had a $40,000 or $50,000 figure where we were paying them to provide a certain service that now, as I understand it, they're providing for free in exchange, or at least in partly in exchange for having the space at a nominal rate. Is that right?
That's correct. They, we provide it $45,000 to $50,000 a year out of general fund for art in public places and the clearinghouse. When the funding from general fund went away, and it's all tourism-funded now, we added those services into the lease for their nominal lease. So they have, where we were providing the $50,000 previously, they now have to provide that out of their own budget for the, in their exchange is the use of the space in Merritt Island.
And Jim, one last question from me. With respect to the, I believe it was a $2 million grant that Commissioner Tabai referenced, I've certainly never voted to approve anything like that here. I don't think $2 million would slip under my nose, maybe 20 cents, but that was not a county grant to your understanding, was it? If it was, I can't imagine...
You're talking Brevard Family Partnership, correct?
If it's the BBHE grant that's being referenced, it's actually a $4 billion grant that the board did authorize the Housing and Human Services Department to submit as the lead agency, as the pass-through.
But it's not coming out of county funds by any means?
No, it's a federal grant. It's 4 million federal, 2 million will be match dollars, and Commissioner Tabai was correct. The 42,000 that we're asking to be used as the fair market value for match is not actually necessary, but with any federal grant, the more you can show that the locality is vested...
Understood.
...the better.
I appreciate it.
And Ian's department has a number of grants they have to apply for as the local government agency, the lead agency, then it's passed through to other agencies.
I know we get that. I mean, we had that with the sheriff. The last item on the last agenda was the same thing. If it's not costing county taxpayers, wonderful federal funds, anytime they want to bring them into Brevard, God bless them, bring them on down. We have a light from Commissioner Tabai, then Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
May I ask, county manager?
Please.
Mr. Bate, I know you don't hate me asking this question, but I'm going to nonetheless. What is your salary, sir?
What is my salary?
What is my salary?
General, yes, sir.
About $200, $2,000.
Perfect. And what is the county budget roughly?
$1.4 billion.
Yep. That puts your compensation somewhere in the range of .01% of the total budget. So I looked at the 990 form and we talked again. And this, again, this is the most recent one to file. This is 2018. The CEO of that very small Brevard Family Partnership had a compensation package, sorry, not a compensation package, but just a compensation of $266,471 of a budget of, according to the same, 24,000, sorry, $24,974,000. In other words, 1.1% of the total budget. Roughly 100 times the amount of that fraction that our manager makes is what's making of this one. The only person I know who has a better compensation package, given the amount of their budget, is the captain of the port. So again, this is not a small mom and pop. This is, and I have it, the list goes down. The interim CEO at the time made $120,000. The CCUMO, I'm not even sure what that title is, but that sounds cool. It's $107,904. We've got a executive director at $103,488. So when you say less, these folks, this is a couple of years ago, so even if they didn't increase the salary, this is multitudes of, as a percentage of their total. This is handout in the worst type of way, Mr. Chair. This is the 990. I didn't make copies, but I'm more than willing to share this with anyone, should you request.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Can you tell us the terms of the lease for each entity?
For each entity?
Well, I see Brevard Culture Alliance. We're extending them out three years.
Three years through the end of September of 2023 for, it's either $0 or $1. Brevard Family Partnership is one year with four one-year renewals.
It's actually, the first year will be 10 months with four one-year renewals.
We're able to break the lease at any time we need to, if we have to.
We are. And that fourth year in the lease is really there because with a lot of federal grants, if you don't expend all the dollars that have been allocated to you in the first, in the actual term, you can do what's called a no-cost extension. So this way, if we end up doing a no-cost extension, they're not having to move or trying to relocate staff at the same time we're trying to close out the grant and provide the final service.
And then the tax collector is space usage.
Couple of questions for staff, and I don't know who wants to kind of bounce on these here, but the $266,471, it sounds high. I'm not going to say otherwise, but I have no idea what someone in a comparable position, that similarly situated, would make. Do you know if it's a high number or a low number? Because I just have no metric to measure that against.
No, no, sir. I don't have that information.
And I don't either, and I couldn't tell you in the private or nonprofit sector.
Yeah.
Quick question, sir, if I may.
Please.
How many employees do they employ? Do we know?
Brevard Family Partnership has.
Come to a mic.
Come up.
If you don't mind, please. And Jim, I'm sorry, if you could just put your name on the record as well, that way we've got it.
Jim Carlson, Satellite Beach, Florida. Brevard Family Partnership has approximately 70 employees at any one time. The reason that that was so high, it included a board-approved severance package for the exiting founding CEO. So she received a severance package that was included in the 990 that Commissioner Tabia referenced. The current CEO salary is one of the lowest in the state, and it's right around $150,000.
Okay. And then, do you have an idea in terms of average employee wage?
We have done several studies, and we're below the area, but it typically includes Orlando, which pays higher.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
I have to do a comparison again. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Please.
But doing the rough math, thank you for clarifying that. Only $150,000 for 70 employees is about $2,100 per employee. Mr. Batte, how many county employees do you have?
About 2200?
Man, I only gave you $2,150. I'm sorry. I was off a little bit. But if we gave the same percentage, Mr. Batte would be making $4.2 million. Again, this is not, and listen, I would vote for it if that was offered, but I tell you, no one works harder than Mr. Batte. But just, but just to give you a perception of this, 70 employees at $150,000, public or private, doesn't sound very bad considering the bargain that we're getting here, which is just to put, you know, I'm sorry, 1/100. The math now, it's only 1/160th as a percentage.
Let me ask you, Commissioner, and I'm trying not to be too facetious with this. Do you think that's a fair analogy to say, well, whatever Frank makes to our 1 point, just shy of $1.5 billion budget is X percent of that, whereas, you know, 150 out of whatever their budget is, is a higher percentage? Do you think that's a fair analogy?
When this organization is asking for space at the expense of taxpayer dollars, absolutely, sir.
Yeah, I'm thinking what the president makes over the federal budget. I think then we would be able to say that Frank is grossly overcompensated as well, and then obviously this would be to a different stratosphere. But my concern, and I would appreciate that, but for what we've heard from staff as well with respect to the amount that we're offsetting for them being put back into the services that are made available for the community. I have no problem if we make the vote contingent upon having a clause in the contract that mandates that, to ensure that that happens, that whatever amount is offset, the nominal value, or, I'm sorry, the actual market value, if we can determine a number, that that amount has to go into the services over and above what they put in in the past. And if they have a problem with that, then they simply won't sign the lease, and if they're okay with it, then wonderful. Would that resolve the concern?
No, no, Mr. Chair. This is a $25 million, at least, again, organization with a CEO that makes $150,000. They have ample resources to go out and get space in a private organization, in a private commercial space. This is going in lieu of space that the county is currently in a private facility. So if we had no one else to put in that, this would be a different argument, but that is in fact not the case. And again, I'm just trying to get as much use of these dollars as possible and not to disparage this organization, because I'm sure they do wonderful work. However, they're very, they're compensated very well for that work, and I don't think that taxpayers need to fund that additional burden. But again, it sounds like you have four votes. I just was putting this out there, that this 990, which I'm sure everyone got, but I'd be more than willing to hand out, Mr. Chair.
Jim, I've got a question for you, because the argument kind of implicitly suggests that if we approve this, somehow that's going to impact the compensation of one or more employees there. Is the CEO or your top C-level who's making, you mentioned 150, which you mentioned was below the industry average, is that individual going to be making more if this nominal lease gets approved?
No current employees will receive additional funding or salary or benefits as a result of this.
So by, I guess, by extension, potentially, if you have additional resources based on this freeing up what otherwise you would have to spend on a lease, you could theoretically employ more folks to provide more services?
Yes, or a contract with other local providers to provide the service.
I appreciate it. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, it's a one-year lease. We can look at it later if we have to make a change. It might be a large salary, but there's a big responsibility to the welfare of children because you have to be very careful placing those children, too. And there's a lot of liability that comes with it as well. So, sir, I'm, I think we're, I'm ready to call the question if you are. I, so.
And Commissioner Tabia, just, you know, as a heads up, if, when this is up for renewal, if you can bring something showing that the actual apples-to-apples comps reflect that this 150 is out of line, I'd be happy to look at that and potentially not renew the lease. But I just, I don't know. I mean, looking at a number in isolation without knowing what the comps are, it's impossible for me to be able to say that's a high number or that's a low number.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm not concerned one way or another what the market bears as if this is a high or this is a low. Frankly, I don't care. However, the fact that they're taking public space does cause me concern. So if that's a small fraction of what it is, or that's three times more, it's irrelevant for me. This is an organization, again, with more than $25 million in contributions in 2018, or, sorry, 2017, for the 2018 filing. They need space. Again, there's a ton of commercial space out there. This is, whatever that is, 3,000 or 4,000 square feet that probably deserves to be in the private space, and ultimately, it's going to be borne by the taxpayers. But I appreciate your concern on that.
Commissioner Snarty, then I'll go ahead and call the question.
And normally, if this wasn't an entity that provided services directly to our constituents, I would probably be where Commissioner Tabia is. And just before the meeting, and we had discussed before, our county nominal leases of organizations that previous commissions, I'm sure, based on their pet projects or their, you know, personal passions, allowed to occur. So I would beg to say that there's probably many items on this list, and I don't really pick on anyone in particular, but we have windsurfing to Bit and Spur Club, and, I mean, I could go down this list of, there's at least 25 to 30 organizations on here that I'm sure have a significant revenue loss to the county if we were to go back and look at potentially recovering some funds. So again, you can pick and choose and say which one is more worthy, but this is the tone that we've set in the county, that we give free leases. So this, to me, is a no-brainer because it's foster services for people that are directly going to benefit in our community, and we are already a partner of this agency, previously decided by previous commissions. So, you know, I'm going to support this because I believe it's, the return on investment and the return on the community is big, and we're not using that space now, so.
And on that front, with respect to us not using the space now, the only two entities that are on the entire upper floor, if you don't factor in the sheriff's side of the building, it's D-2 and it's Myra, and it's a ghost town apart from that. The vast majority of that space is open. And frankly, from a selfish perspective, you might say I'd want to vote against this because there's less traffic, there are less people to potentially cough on me with coronavirus going around there. There'd be less of an issue parking, but I can't have that space sit there and do nothing. I can tell you, there's been no interest, certainly commercially, in renting the space. I don't know if that's something we'd even entertain anyway. And as far as competing with private enterprise, I don't know that I'd want to do that either, but I agree, you know, for the reasons that you stated, and I think we've been through just about everything with this. I think this is one of those where it's atypical enough, and it's extenuating enough, that it's worth supporting. So who'd like to make a motion? Oh, that's right. Commissioner Pritchett, you made a motion. I went ahead and seconded it already. That's correct. All right. All in favor of approving J-2, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Passes 3-2 with Commissioner Smith?
No, Commissioner, it fails.
Oh.
It was a.
Pardon me. It failed. Supermajority. Thank you. That's right.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. If the lease fails, there's a number of different options. There's approval to request for the tax collector to give them space. Brevard Family Partnership, there's also Brevard Culture Alliance. So, I mean, if you wouldn't mind taking them separate.
I was going to say, maybe we could just do them one by one, or if you want, we could always group everything else and just leave.
It's your pleasure, yes. I just want to point out, it's more than just family partnership.
I make a motion to approve the taxpayer.
Taxpayer.
Taxpayer. Thank you.
Commissioner Tabia, is that a little lighter?
Second.
All right. Okay, we have a motion to approve item J-2, insofar as it involves the tax collector proposal and contract. We have a second from Commissioner Tabia. All in favor of approving that as to the tax collector's office, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right.
And then.
Passes unanimously as to the tax collector. Next, we'll look at BCA. Is that fair?
Correct.
All right. May I have a motion to approve with respect to BCA?
I make a motion to approve it for a year.
Okay, a motion to approve BCA for a year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Passes 4-1. That is a supermajority. Thank you for pointing that out, too. And lastly, I guess it's just BFP, and that's not going to pass, so I suppose we move on.
Okay.
Do we, Commissioner Smith, with respect to BFP, is it your intention not to support it or to support it? I just, I don't want to call the question unnecessarily or ask for a motion on it?
Yeah, I'll support it.
All right. May I have a motion with respect to approving BFP? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Snarty. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of approving the lease and the contractual arrangement suggested in J-2 with respect to BFP, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. That passes 4-1 with a supermajority with Commissioner Tabia in the negative.
And, Mr. Chair, forgive me, that includes the county manager's signed amendments, modifications to the leases upon approval, and execute necessary budget change requests.
Any objections? I can call it as a separate question, but as to the three votes that we just had, any objection to having the county manager and/or his designee autograph any necessary documents in order to make this happen? Okay, hearing none. I think you have that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, one last. Does that include being, allowing BFP to use the fair market value as match for the grant?
That's not going to cost us anything?
No.
If someone wants a motion on that, I'm happy to entertain it, but I don't know that that's an issue. Does anyone have an objection to that?
No.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion. Commissioner Pritchett, I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Tabia, I know you're just kind of chomping at the bit over there.
No, I'm just trying to understand. Can, maybe I missed something.
You want to save it for board reports, or you want to?
No, no, I'm just trying to, procedurally, the outcome, was that any different than the motion and the aggregate as opposed to, just trying to follow along here?
That's an excellent question. No.
Good job, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's take a look here. We're done with J-2, thankfully. We'll move on to J-3, and I don't believe this is going to be a controversial one. This is the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, one of many that we've dealt with. This one in the amount of $48,482, and we're basically acting as the pass-through. May I have a motion to approve this? All right, a motion from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of approving item J's and Julie at 3, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. We do have one public comment card. We have Sandra Sullivan from South Patrick Shores.
Good morning, Board. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. I'm here about health and safety. I read some reports this week that very much concern me, that our little zip code of 32937 has been known for decades to be a elevated, higher incidence of childhood cancers. A map showing it dark gray on a few areas of the state. A little tiny zip code, and it was mentioned in one report as being the third highest. That brings me to what potentially might cause that, and one of the concerns I have in doing the research I have, is I have found this legacy of organochlorine pesticides, which were banned in the late 80s. One in particular called chloridine, but also the other ones, DDT, heparclor, doldren, aldren, et cetera. These were on very high levels on Patrick Air Force Base, just north of our community. I show evidence of migration into the groundwater to the south. But it turns out also, the Hodgkins Cluster that everybody knows about was, they were looking at those chemicals. They also released them to the river with no public advisory with an ALS cluster that followed, and the reports both from DEP and EPA indicate that this was a risk to human health. Fast forward to the south base housing, which the high school is adjacent to, and it turns out in reviewing those Phase 1 reports, that there is a recognized environmental condition, which is a legal term for that contaminant. There's been no testing. We've requested for two years. Now, I understand this isn't in the county, but the high school is adjacent, and our unincorporated students go to that school. It is possible for there to be slow groundwater migration from this contamination, which means the sprinkling. contamination, which means the sprinklers running on the fields, which more athletes and cheerleaders seem to have these cancers, raises a question that, is this impacting our children at the adjacent school? I have advocated my heart out to try and get Patrick Air Force Base at Radboard meetings, and in letters to the state and our representative state officials. I cannot get action. I am asking for Bervard County to advocate for our children in 32937. I'm going to send you a report with these, talking about the higher incidence of cancer among our children. There have been three children that have died of DIPG cancer in the last year. There's only 300 or 400 in the entire country. It raises a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and I'm happy to look at anything that you may send to my office. Obviously, if it's something that the board needs to act on, we can address that at a subsequent meeting after we get that. But if it's something that I can act individually on, depending on what I get, I may send something out just on my own behalf as an individual commissioner. That's it for public comment for the second section, so we'll move on to board reports. Mr. Bate?
No report.
Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Mr. Pritchett?
Just one quick item, we're getting ready to have our CARES workshop. I was wondering if you guys would consider the county also considering Circles of Care. I reached out to him this week, they work with a lot of people with mental health. They're overwhelmed, and they have 15% more people that they can't even get to that are having a lot of problems. So if you guys wouldn't mind that being part of the discussion.
Okay, I'll actually jump in on that. Dave, I don't know if you want to grab one of these. Mr. Berman, since I think you're the only member of the media that's hanging out in the audience here, but I, yeah, I just distributed these to the other commissioners and also to the clerk to add to the minutes, just so you have it to make your life a little easier. So I don't want to go through and read seven or eight pages, but I do want to go over a few things in my board report here, and there are a couple other items I do want to mention, one a little... With respect to that, yeah, I don't mind if it's added. I don't think anyone minds if it's proposed.
No, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I don't, my thought is, I don't know, I mean, anyone that wants something added on there, certainly you're welcome to pitch it, and I think...
Well, if y'all said all night, I didn't want to waste your time, so.
No, and I, that's kind of why I'm dovetailing in the order I'm dovetailing in here as well. But I'll kind of start in reverse. On page, starting at the bottom of page three on the front end and going into page four, and this whole memo talks about distribution of a portion of the remaining CARES Act funds, but the bottom of three going into four talks about two animal rescue groups that have in-county shelter facilities, and the proposal with that is essentially to allow the SPCA, which is up in D1, and then the Humane Society, which is kind of right in between the two of us, or certainly the north side of the county, but serves the entire county, to allow them to apply for up to $100,000 in CARES Act funding. I justify it in there in terms of the programs that are being put on and what they do, and why those particular organizations are potentially more, more worthy of merit than other organizations based on their offsetting costs that otherwise would fall in the county and providing county facilities. But a couple of other proposals that I wanted to throw out there, just so people can start mulling them over while we have at least a little time between now and November 5th. Going back to the front end, BCFR is the first addressed proposal. I think we have an opportunity to really do a tremendous amount in terms of allocating CARES Act funding to BCFR. Frank, I don't know if you, I don't want to put you in a spot if you're not ready to talk about it at all today, and I apologize for not, you know, giving you notice that I might even kind of pick on you a little bit, but if you have something you want to chime in, in terms of the number that you believe qualifies, you know, I'd certainly welcome that.
Okay. Under the CARES Act, and we'll be talking about this more fully in, on November 5th, but there is opportunity for the board to cover certain countywide costs, and that's how we would recommend it, related to services that are provided on a countywide basis that would include unincorporated, incorporated areas. For fire rescue, that would be the EMS transport, and we've done an analysis because the U.S. Department of Treasury and the Office of Inspector General has said that personnel costs and benefit costs of medics who are on a countywide ambulance service could be covered. That could cover up to $11.1 million from the period of March 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2020. So we'll be bringing that back, you know, for the board's consideration with everything else.
I appreciate that.
And whatever we hear from individual commissioners, we'll be happy to add. As a matter of fact, what Commissioner Pritchett just brought up on Circles of Care, actually, Ian had a request from an agency on mental health in addition to, or I should say, expanding that even further, and we will bring back, if that's good for the board, we'll bring that back because it's mental health services, and Ian, I don't know if you can address that extremely briefly, but for the board.
Yes, as a result of some of the revenue reductions at the state level, the, there is, just like there's a lead agency for foster care, there's a lead agency for mental health substance abuse, and all of those agencies across the state were required to cut their budgets by 3% this year as a result. They passed those cuts on to all their provider agencies. In Bervard, it is Circles of Care, and there was another agency that was about a $13,000 cut, but all total Circles of Care's reduction from that 3% was about $300,000. So that's what was the number that I was going to be bringing back to the board on November 5th.
I appreciate it, sir. So, looking at another item, and Ian, I think this would in all likelihood interest you. On page two, the second item that I mentioned here is this housing mortgage and rent assistance. So on the front end, we approved a $4.4 million allocation to put in place a housing assistance program. We initially had a requirement that applicants showed that they had lost 25% of their income, but we have, we've struck that since that time. We've also, as a county, gone ahead and extended the maximum duration that someone could qualify from three months to 10 months. But the problem with that, although that sounds great, and it is great, is that the maximum that someone is eligible to receive under the program is $7,200. So if you look at a 10-month period to get $7,200, if that's the totality of what they're bringing in because they have zero income whatsoever, you're talking about $720 a month irrespective of how big the family is. And I don't know that you can find necessarily anything for $720 a month in a lot of the areas of the county. I'm not suggesting that we raise that to the point that we allow someone to get some luxurious waterfront, you know, estate that they can host lavish and extravagant parties in, but I think, you know, $7,200 is just, it's a bit too low really to accomplish all that we can accomplish. So the proposal that I'll bring forward at the workshop on November 5th is to raise that from $7,200 to $12,500, which frankly, still may be low, but for $1250 a month, at least there's a higher potential they can find something that's habitable where they don't have to worry about the roaches gnawing on them at night, or the rats gnawing on them at night. The other thing is, in order to ensure that we have adequate funding in that program, I think we need to look at infusing it with a little bit more cash than the initial $4.4, so I'm suggesting we add another 50% to make it 6.6, so another 2.2 million, which amounts to almost exactly 2% of the total pot of CARES Act allocation the county received. Another item that started on the base of page two deals with urgent care clinics. There are at least 22, I think there may actually be 24 urgent care facilities throughout the county. There's some, I start mostly in D2, in Cocoa Beach, Rockledge, Merritt Island, but they're also in Malabar, they're in Port St. John, Palm Bay, Melbourne, Indian Harbor Beach, Titusville, they're all over the place in unincorporated Bervard, including Vieira. Some of these are owned by at least one larger entity. Irrespective of that, though, the majority seem to be either small facilities or individual facilities, and my suggestion that I'll bring forth on the 5th is that we allow them, irrespective of their participation in other programs, to apply for up to $5,000 per urgent care facility for expenses that would qualify for reimbursement, with the caveat that they can't double-dip on the same expenses. I don't want someone making money because they spent $5,000 on PPE that they otherwise wouldn't have, and get $5,000 from one source and $5,000 from another source in order to pay for the same expense. Looking at just basic math, we're talking about something in the line of 1/10 of 1% of the overall pot, and I think that's something that would help a lot of the frontline folks at these facilities. And I don't know specifically how Tetra Tech will evaluate it, but, you know, just looking at it, if you take a facility and they bought, you know, certain value in gloves from March of last year until March of this year, if we looked between March of this year, I should say, actually, no, between January of last year and the end of December, if we looked between, let's say, March and December of this year after the pandemic, if that monthly allocation is substantially higher, we could look at that delta and determine potentially why they spent more. Is it really on account of COVID, or there are other factors? I don't know how Tetra Tech can dig into that, I'm sure they have a methodology that they can put in place that's smarter than what I'm suggesting, but I just think that's something that we can put in place to help these folks out that's really of minuscule cost to the overall pot, certainly on a percentage basis. Even if we allocated to all of these folks, we're talking in the league of, you know, 130,000 if they're 26 clinics, I'm not sure we even have that many. Beyond that, and I just want to call attention to this because it was, I think, made relevant by the prior comments that we had, the very last paragraph of page four is, you know, perhaps not the most PC thing to say, but I mentioned if there's an articulable countywide benefit, I'm probably going to be willing to support similar funding to what I'm proposing for these animal nonprofits, for other nonprofits that, like I said, benefit the county if another commissioner is inclined. You know, everyone has causes that are near and dear, I think, as long as we can articulate a countywide benefit. If it's something, in this case, if it's offsetting county shelter costs and providing a service and keeping strays off the street, wonderful. If it's something that deals with mental health, if that's something that's near and dear to another commissioner, also wonderful. Whatever it may be, I'm happy to look at it, but I want to keep it somewhat brief. There's a lot more detail in the document that I passed out, but in the interest of time, I'll leave it to that. There are two other things, very, very briefly, I want to touch on, one of which I'm going to ask you to stay seated on because I don't know what the reaction is going to be. It was suggested to me by a constituent not too long ago that we consider, and I'm not saying that we should do this, I am going to qualify and preface the heck out of it, I just think it's something that we may want to consider, considering. The suggestion was to look at renaming the county from Bervard County to Space Coast County. And part of me thinks that's incredibly cool, and part of me thinks we're kind of eliminating the history that we have, and I don't know where I really fall on that. I haven't, you know, I haven't had a chance to talk with staff about it. Certainly from a tourism perspective, I think there's some potential benefits. I just, I don't know where I am with that discussion. It was something that was brought up to me. I figure if a constituent's shopping it to me, they may shop it to you all as well. So just something to think about between now and when someone may or may not reach out to you, or between now and when someone may or may not bring it up at a commission meeting. Lastly, I don't know how the other commission districts are doing with respect to this, but certainly in D2, we have a ton of water between the rivers, the Barge Canal, the ocean, we've got a ton of it. An issue came forth, and I just distributed, right before this item got brought up, an email that I received from a constituent of mine, who's an ecologist that lives in D2. Bottom line, in short, is we have potential issues with respect to the DOT code. Other municipalities, other counties have provisions that essentially serve to limit folks blocking access to adjacent docks. I would just like to have permission to have Planning and Development put forth a report, and put together a report, that would probably suggest some potential code revisions for us to consider when it's done, that might rectify some dock-related issues. If there are issues in other districts, I'm happy to have them included, whatever those might be, but I would just ask at this point to have a motion authorizing staff to put together that draft report to propose code changes, if necessary, to address dock-related issues throughout the county.
So moved.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Smith, may I count that as a second? Commissioner Pritchett? All right, second from Commissioner Pritchett, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. And with that, I'll shut up. Let's see here. Commissioner Tabia?
Thanks. As we move forward with CARES funding, I grew up in England, and I'm often reminded of something Margaret Thatcher said, something to the effect of, the problem with socialism is you eventually run out of other people's money. So please remember that as these organizations come asking you for more and more and more. When we start picking winners and losers, what's worse than this? We're not running out of other people's money, we're now running into people's money that haven't even been born yet. So when we hear things from, I don't know, we'll probably hear something from the zoo, I'd imagine, you know, and we're going to hear something from Green Cables, or I don't know what we've heard. Just remember, guys, that eventually, someone is going to have to repay these dollars.
You kind of caught me with that comment about having spent some time in England. Did you live there for a long time, or?
Six years.
Six years? So I don't know if you've seen that Star Show Outlander, but they have a term that the, I guess the Scottish called the English, that meant basically outsider, sassenach? May I use that as a term of endearment for you now?
Either way.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to offer up kudos to my fellow commissioners, serving with you for the last four years, and I'm quite sure each and every one of you will be reelected, so I'm looking forward to spending the next two years of my term with you guys as well. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, because I'm quite sure none of you are going to go anywhere, and I certainly hope not. My real memoir pink update, we are $1,200 short of my target of $7,500 to get my hair dyed pink. So anybody that wishes to see me with pink hair for a week, I encourage you to support this worthy cause. And, let's see, what else I have here? Nope, that's it.
Easy peasy. Commissioners Snarty?
Yeah, I actually had on my list Circles of Care as my second item here for us to consider as far as CARES Act funding, because I know there, you know, having seen a lot of patients in my office, I know mental health issues are up, and we only have so much we're able to provide for people in the county, and it's one of the only agencies that people rely on, and they're definitely, definitely underfunded and not able to provide the services they want to provide. So also, too, I would like us to look at Aging Matters, particularly just the Meals on Wheels program. I want to make sure that, you know, a lot of these seniors that were getting out even before aren't getting out now because of the COVID-19. So that and the Homeless Coalition, if there's any COVID, I want obviously all of these to be COVID-related. I don't want us to just be approving our personal favorite causes just because, you know, we think that they're worthy, because I'm sure every agency is worthy. I want to make sure that, at the very least, just because the government opened up the criteria for us to be able to distribute this money throughout the community, I want to make sure that it's COVID-related. So these agencies don't become dependent on this kind of funding that's not going to exist next year or next quarter for them. So just those three for now.
Do you need a second for that?
What's that?
Do you need a second? I don't think we really do.
I don't know, I think as long as anybody doesn't object to it, I'd like to at least have those items looked at, if we can reach out to them.
The listing of everything that the board has sent to make sure that we include all those agencies in the November 5th discussion, there's going to be two aspects to that, is going to do it, one would be easier, and the second...
The easier one actually is determining whether or not it's COVID-related, as you've indicated. The more difficult one is going to be the same kind of challenge we've had in some of the other programs, and that is evaluating, a lot of these agencies, and I believe Meals on Wheels may be one of them, receive significant funding, or have, are receiving significant funding. As a matter of fact, we've reached out to them, and they've indicated that they have other partner agencies or, you know, government resources that are reimbursing them. So, you know, we're making sure that we make it clear to them that it has to be for something that they're not already receiving reimbursement for. So, you know, we'll continue to do that and move that ahead in preparation for the November 5th, try to reach out to these organizations, and we'll be happy to do that for the Homeless Coalition as well.
And of course, as always, and I've always stated this, it should be for primary needs, it should be food, shelter, you know, emergency.
Right.
Funding, that sort of thing.
Okay.
That's it.
Sounds good. Anything we forget? Don, Colonel, Fritz, Ian? Sounds like we got it all. Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn at 10:05. Thank you all.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Bervard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Bervard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly dis-